All right. Everyone ready? I'll call this February 8th, school committee meeting to order at 6:00 PM. If you all stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Ware, if you take a role.
Yes, Kira Thompson.
Colleen Marcus.
Here.
Nancy Farrell.
Here.
Diane Coyne.
Here.
I'm sorry, Diana.
Oh, here.
Bill Garvey.
Here.
And Mayor Raichel.
Here. Our student rep is not here at this time. We're going to double check, make sure she knows the meetings are now at 6:00 instead of 7:00. And just for the public out there, too, the meetings are at 6:00 now instead of 7:00 PM. So you can have dinner after the meetings. Subcommittee updates. Ms. Farrell.
Thank you, Mayor Raichel. The budget subcommittee has been meeting on a regular basis as we begin to prepare the FY '23 budget. One of the items that we discussed at our last meeting, staffing for SLIFE, students with limited or interrupted formal education, is on the agenda tonight. We have been reviewing the governor's proposed budget and the proposed Chapter 70 funding. We also reviewed positions that are grant funded and positions added this year and funded with ESER, which is the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. We are looking at class sizes across the districts and will discuss recommendations made by the administration for the FY '23 budget for staff needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other subcommittees that like to make a report?
I wanted to just give a quick update. I am now on the Board of Directors for the Lower Pioneer Valley Career and Tech Education Center. Just like to report that there was a Board of Directors meeting on January 19th, 2022. The LPVEC had an open house on February 1st, 2022. And today, there were a couple of sessions highlighting the Students of the Month. That is what I'd like to report on that.
Thank you. Move on to approval of open session minutes, January 25th, 2022. Ms. Farrell, do you have a motion?
Motion to approve open session minutes of January 25th, 2022.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor. Opposed? Anonymous. Presentations, Fozzy School Academic Progress. Principal Skolnick, the floor is yours.
So as our administration from Fozzy come on up and get ready to share, you know, we've been focused in so much on COVID over the last two years. And our faculty and staff, our administration are doing a great job on the academic side. So we want to change the conversation and start to talk about student learning. And so thank you, Ms. Skolnick, as well as Mr. Thoma.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Like Superintendent Connor, I'm Mr. Thoma, the Vice Principal of Fozzy. This is Principal Skolnick. And we are just very honored and delighted to be here tonight to celebrate the great work that goes on at Fozzy Elementary School. The success of our students is greatly attributed to our caring and nurturing teachers, staff, parents, caregivers, and the overall community of West Springfield. To make sure that all of our students' needs are being met, we use the District Improvement Plan to guide our values and principles. Most of our own school improvement plan is closely aligned with the District Improvement Plan, such as highly effective instructional models that meet the needs of all learners, using data effectively to inform best practices and interventions, and creating a learning environment that not only meets our students' academic needs, but their social and emotional needs as well. Our first few slides reflect the joy and sense of belonging at our school. So right here is just a quick slide of a fundraiser we had back in November. And these are some of our first grade students and a first grade teacher. Moving on to second grade, of course. The next slide, third grade. Fourth grade. We have our fifth graders. And then lastly, we have a sub-separate classroom that was also that participated in this. So we had all students participate in this. What they were participating in was something known as a fun run. It was a very inclement day. We shifted gears and we made sure to have this activity indoors. And I have to tell you, it was a great success. The kids got to run and dance. They had a DJ all the while, raising funds for school. So thank you. And next in our presentation, Principal Skolnick will discuss academic results.
Thank you for having us. If you can't hear me, I can't imagine that. But if you can hear me, just let me know and I'll take this off. So what do we look at when we look at academic results at Fozzy? Just a few little slides here. For math, we look at iReady, AVMR, which is Advantage Math Recovery. MCAS, obviously, intervention records, basic facts, which is one of the things that we're trying right now is the Reflex, basic facts, software. And literacy, the same thing, MCAS. BASS is a big thing that we look at. And I'll be sharing that figures with you tonight about our incoming first graders. Then observation surveys, intervention records, the same as math, and writing prompts in iReady. Okay, that looks like a huge list. But if you look to the next slide, this is what our teachers do. They're doing running records. I'm not reading all of it because you'll fall asleep. But this is what they do. It does not include all the socio-emotional supports and notes that they take every day to make sure that their children are well taken care of, your children, their students. So our teachers are constantly reviewing the results. We used to call them data, but we call them results now, even during a pandemic. Day one, I'm taking this off if you don't mind. So day one, when our students went into pandemic remote learning mode in March of 2019, there were so many things that our teachers were concerned about. We didn't know how long it was going to be, but they started with the SCL concerns, very, you know, making sure that the kids know we're there for them. Then went on to, how do we teach them? How do we learn so that we can teach them? Because we were not obviously savvy on this type of learning right away. All our paras, all our teachers, everyone came on board and became savvy as quickly as possible. The last, well, not the last thing. One of the things that we looked at, as you can see, we did a lot of assessing. So how do we assess children as they're so far away from us through a monitor? That we weren't able to do the BASS test, which is Benchmark Assessment, which we do that every single year, especially with our incoming first graders. So we ended up finding other ways to do it. We used what's called literacy footprints, for example, which was not as good as BASS because you're not assessing a child one-on-one, but it was pretty close. So with that data, we were able to tailor our lessons so that we were able to teach our kids as efficiently as possible. The best thing that happened, I think, one of the best things, was the amount of collaboration that the parents and the students, I'm sorry, and the teachers had during this time. It was like everybody just kind of came together. We don't, obviously, there was a lot of challenges. Nobody's denying that. But we actually did very well. We ended up doing very well in MCAS. We're considered one of the 30, top 30% in the state. And we were given an award by U.S. News and World Report for that achievement. So it was a factor that, you know, like I said, everybody stepped up. Our interventionists became remote teachers, for example. Not because I told them they had to be, but not because I asked them to or whatever. They actually just came to me and said, we need to do this. You know, so that's the, I think, I'm trying to say is the environment that our teachers, our staff have. And we, you know, we have our issues, trust me, but we come together. So this year, we have all of our incoming kindergartners becoming first graders with not a lot of experience in being in a classroom. Kids in first grade don't learn well through a computer. We all know that. They're very hands-on, preschoolers, first grade, very hands-on. So most of the time, you know, we do, it is a bump for the kids to come into a community that is a little bit more demanding of their time, but especially during a pandemic because they are not used to, they were not used to being in a school, in a classroom setting. So I'm going to show you our results in literacy. I forget what was this for. We have so many events. So this is what I was talking about, BASS. When you look at BASS, this goes through seventh grade, I believe, eighth grade. When you look at BASS, this is the chart we look at. And as you can see, in kindergarten, in first grade, there's little letters there that tell you where a child should be coming in. In West Springfield, if a child comes into first grade, it should be around a C or a D level. Okay, so I blew up the first grade section of it, in the kindergarten. You can see the kindergarten section. So you know that coming into first grade, that first column next to grade one, C and D is where they should be coming in for West Springfield. D and E is above reading, the reading achievement coming in. And below C is worrisome. When we, and I blew up the, on the right-hand side to kind of show you. A non-reader is a child that is pre-A. What does that look like? It's a child that does not know how to, what letters really are or what matching letters using left-to-right behaviors when they're trying to read, differentiating between print and pictures. There's a whole list of things if you ever want to geek out with me. So this is what we have coming in. The blue line on the bottom shows what our students came in on. So we can't, I couldn't do letters on the left-hand side. The vertical, the A became a one. I'm sorry, the pre-A became a one. A two is A, which is very low coming in. Three, four is when they're supposed to be like a B, C. So all the blue is extremely worrisome. We had a lot of children, if you look, each one of those dots represents a child's output assessed by BASS. We have enormous amount of children that came in with pre-A only rankings. And you see some that came in like very good readers. But most, we've never really had this low of incoming first grade results. If we had a pre-A, we would be saying, oh, my goodness, we need to do something about this quickly. We had a ton of preAs and a ton of As and a ton of Bs. So C and D is when they're supposed to be. As you can see, oh, I can do something here. As you can see, for example, all right, this whole blue line right here is the preAs all the way across. Again, As. Okay, so it was dismal looking, you know, and you do have some kids up here with high scores. But you can see what, I think it was last week, we got these results. These children have gone up from pre-A. Some of them are exceeding expectations. They're gone into second grade level from our efforts and from the exposure to, you know, a real classroom and so forth. So this is a huge impressive move. If you can look at the ones that I'm circling right now, pre-A. And they're way up here. So again, just impressive change from improvement from the efforts of our first grade teachers, our intervention teachers. What would have made sense to some people, pre-A should get interventions right away. We felt otherwise. We started with the higher kids that needed to move quite a bit to get into the average range. We let the little ones that did not have the classroom experience have the classroom experience. So they, we went through preschool and kindergarten quickly. We're like, okay, you ready? You're ready? No, but we did that. We exposed them to a classroom experience, how to hold a book, how to socialize. They needed those experiences before we started to do interventions. So as you can see, this is another way of looking at this. PreAs right here, we had 16 preAs. We went down to three. And this, these results include all our special needs students. So we had, you know, and so forth, you can see. We have an enormous amount of kids. Thirty-seven kids at this point have exceeded expectations. So we're extremely proud of this. I'm showing you also the third grade BASS levels. Not because, you know, I want to go deep into this and it's only 33 students because we only had a certain amount of time for this presentation. But this is more what we've seen in the past. They're improving, but within a few weeks, you know, of exposure or, you know, being in a classroom or having interventions, this is what we expect to see. And this kind of shows you what our second grade teachers did while we were on pandemic. They kept up with it. They were able to get the kids still staying the course as they would have in a regular school year. Year and a half. Again, they have improved. Only 33 kids are represented here, but this is more typical of what we've had in the past.
That's my.
Yeah, sorry.
So thank you for that. And now we're going to talk a little bit about our math results. But the children are more fun to look at and enjoy. So we had some nice pictures. We had a really nice event. We had a fun in the snow day. And as you can see, we let our students go out and enjoy the snow and just play and be kids and just really focusing and honing in on social, emotional, as well as academics, I think, has really lent this, these great results that we're seeing right now. So. Awesome. So that was really nice. I just want to talk to you guys a little bit about iReady Math. It's one of the diagnostic tools that we use. This is just a general way of looking at it. On the left-hand side, you can see, this is a snapshot of the entire school and where we're at. And so they color-coded it for us, you know, the red being at risk, the yellow being the tier twos. And what I guess the yellow, what that truly means is that you are one grade level below. Green means you're at grade level. And the red would be your two grade levels below. Forgive me for going out of sequence there. So you have the overall placement on the left. And on the right-hand side, you have it by the domain. So there are four domains that we look at throughout this. So this is our diagnostic results for the fall time. As you can see, mostly in the yellow section, but a lot more red than green. And that's not what we want to see. And it's broken down by all the grades, first, second, third, fourth, and fifth. So Principal Skolnick and I, we can look at this along with our interventionists and just have an idea where we're at and what we need to do to move our students. So. The next slide is our mid-year. And when you look at our mid-year, and I have another slide later that will really show it, but you see all this increase in green. And so when you see that, you're like, yes, like, look at all the green and the decrease in the red and even the decrease in yellow. And so making those, that progress is really uplifting for staff and for our students and to really see that our efforts are really having a terrific effect on our students. So just looking at this mid-year, the testing window is still open, so we don't have all the data currently. But just looking at the mid-year with first and in fifth grade, which has the most of our students who have done the work, so much green, very little red. It really does warm your soul to see this kind of stuff. We had curriculum day with our staff and was able to share some of this with them. And I think it really delights them to see the growth that their students are making through their efforts. You know, it can definitely be a thankless type of job and work, but to see this, I think, really, really makes people feel good. Math progress, absolutely. Just side-by-side, top and bottom there, just looking at the progress we've made from the fall to the mid-year. So much more green. So definitely greener pastures to come. This is also just another side-by-side from the fall to the mid-year. And just kind of like focusing on first and fifth grade. You know, when you look at grade one in the fall time, more red than green. And then when you look at the mid-year, you're like, goodness, who are these kids? You know, like, they have just made such incredible strides and such gains. And even with our fifth graders. So being back to school, all the hard work that everyone is putting in is really having such wonderful results for everybody. And just, you know, just want to be, we're just very thankful for the work that our staff and our teachers do and the parents and the caregivers. And yeah, and that's much cooler. So watch that for a moment.
I guess we can go on and just finalize this. I want to thank everyone for having us here. A special thank you to Superintendent Connor for supporting us, for having us share a little bit about what goes on at Fozzy. Hold on, excuse me. I guess it has to go to the end. So we keep on having fun events for the kids. We just had, what's his name, Boomer?
Boomer, from the Thunderbirds.
Visit us from the Thunderbirds to encourage reading. We have, you know, all kinds of things going on. We wish we could have family events, but we are sharing with them all the wonderful things that are going on. We have a newsletter. We have all kinds of ways that we, that we, you know, make sure that families are involved. I also want to thank the school committee, the mayor, for providing us with the extra help that we needed this year. Like, we're showing you that there is a difference. We're going to, at the end of the year, show you even more. We have two counselors that work full-time at all times. We have a lot of need. We have a lot of support for our families and for our kids. So we're very thankful for that. We have additional two interventionists for the upper grades. That's what's making a difference here. Our teachers are amazing, but the interventionists are coming in, supporting them. And then the teachers are going in and also double-dipping the kids, making sure that they get to grade level as quickly as possible. As you can see, they're going way above grade level. And also for having us, allowing us to have a full unified arts experience for our kids. Thank you for letting us present and thank you for letting us be at Fozzy. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mayor, can you?
Yeah.
So I just want to say what a great job you guys are doing. And this is reflective of all our schools. And so, just so the public knows, each month, we're going to have a new school come and present the data. But the work that the faculty and staff, and you can see all the hard work beyond just the academics that makes the Fozzy School such a welcoming place. Thank you for your leadership and thank you for getting our kids back into the routines again. And gosh, they're showing great progress. So thank you.
Questions, Ms. Farrell?
I'm just going to kind of echo what Mr. Connor said. Thank you. The presentation was extremely informative. It was nice to see the mix of the social, emotional things that you were doing for the kids as well as the academic pieces. And the only thing that I'm going to ask, because I'm really a math person, is when they finish that iReady test, do you think you could send us the chart of the whole school when it's finished? Like, I know you said, like, you know, that you're working on it and some grades aren't complete yet. So I would love to see the comparison from the beginning of the year to the mid-year when all of the school, when all of the students, or the majority of them, were finished with that.
I would love to, I didn't want to overburden you, but yes, I would love to share that with you. We actually just had a school, a school meeting right before this. And we started sharing out their results. So, and that's what we're going to focus on during our PD, to prepare for the rest of the year with the data in hand and also for next year. Because we're already looking ahead. Or, you know, hopefully, we'll have stability now and we're going to make it even better next year. So I would love to share that with you.
And I think on the first one in the fall, if I remember it correctly, I think like when the green was the lowest in geometry compared to the other one. So it would be interesting to see if that picked up and was even with the other strands or if it was different than the other domains now.
We always have that result and I would love to figure out a way to get that better. I think that's throughout the district and the state. But, you know, I'm thinking like playground.
We have a lot of need. We have a lot of support for our families and for our kids. So, we're very thankful for that. We have additional two interventionists for the upper grades. That's what's making a difference here. Our teachers are amazing, but the interventionists are coming in, supporting them, and then the teachers are going in and also double-dipping the kids, making sure that they get to grade level as quickly as possible. As you can see, they're going way above grade level. And also for having us, allowing us to have a full unified arts experience for our kids. Thank you for letting us present and thank you for letting us be at Fozzie. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mayor, can you?
Yeah.
So, I just want to say what a great job you guys are doing. And this is reflective of all our schools. And so, just so the public knows, each month, we're going to have a new school come and present the data. But the work that the faculty and staff, and you can see all the hard work beyond just the academics, that makes the Fozzie School such a welcoming place. Thank you for your leadership and thank you for getting our kids back into the routines again. And gosh, they're showing great progress. So, thank you.
Questions, Ms. Farrell?
I'm just going to kind of echo what Mr. Connor said. Thank you. The presentation was extremely informative. It was nice to see the mix of the social, emotional things that you were doing for the kids as well as the academic pieces. And the only thing that I'm going to ask, because I'm really a math person, is when they finish that iReady test, do you think you could send us the chart of the whole school when it's finished? Like, I know you said, like, you know, that you're working on it and some grades aren't complete yet. So, I would love to see the comparison from the beginning of the year to the mid-year when all of the school, when all of the students or the majority of them were finished with that.
I would love to, I didn't want to overburden you, but yes, I would love to share that with you. We actually just had a school, a school meeting right before this, and we started sharing out their results. So, and that's what we're going to focus on during our PD, to prepare for the rest of the year with the data in hand and also for next year, because we're already looking ahead. You know, hopefully, we'll have stability now and we're going to make it even better next year. So, I would love to share that with you.
And I think on the first one in the fall, if I remember it correctly, I think like when the green was the lowest in geometry compared to the other ones. So, it would be interesting to see if that picked up and was even with the other strands or if it was different than the other domains now.
We always have that result, and I would love to figure out a way to get that better. I think that's throughout the district and the state. But, you know, I'm thinking like playground stuff that has geometry and everything. I'm all about outside the box, right, Mr. Connor? So, yeah, no, I see that. We have done really well in two of the strands, but we always struggle with the geometry.
Yeah, and Fozzie gets some pretty good MCAS results. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Marcus?
Just a couple of comments, questions. Today was twin day, so I was kind of expecting you might show up in similar outfits.
No, it wasn't twin day. What is it?
It was teamwork Tuesday, but I do believe.
Right here.
In one of my children's, grandchildren's classes, it was twin day for sure. But no, in all seriousness, the academic results are truly impressive. However, the efforts that you and your staff have made to promote a sense of belonging and a supportive, warm, welcoming environment, you've got, you've gone above and beyond. There is not a week that goes by that there's not an event that is geared to getting the kids excited and enthusiastic about going to school. So, again, thank you and your staff for all your hard work.
Thank you. I think that a lot of that has to do with the parents also. They collaborated with us. PTO is amazing. And our teachers and staff have big hearts. Like, this week is school counselors' week, and it's supposed to be about them, but they made it about the kids. So, every day is a different event. And yeah, it tires me out, but it's amazing. Really, thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Coy?
So, I am not a teacher, but listening to this has been so informative and powerful as a parent of kids who have gone through, the schools are still going through. I look and I see, listening to this presentation, creativity, flexibility, collaboration, tenacity, problem-solving. I think overall, I just see an amazing testament to the professionalism of this profession of teaching and all your experiences in how this is helping frame the lives of our young children to go out into the world and make their name. And that I, it's amazing to me. I keep doing what you're doing. Kudos. How do we get one of these T-shirts? Because those are pretty cool, too.
I can, I have connections.
I didn't know if it's an organization or something or if it was.
No, it was part of the fundraiser.
Oh, okay. I'm all about fundraiser.
That means I'm going to get an invoice tomorrow.
No, I'll donate. That's fine. But thank you.
We bring smentals, but I didn't want to.
Forgot about those. But thank you very much for this presentation.
Anyone else? Seeing none, thank you very much. Makes me proud to be a Fozzie Falcon. Now, get one in. All right, we'll go back to the student rep. Tassie is here. Floor is yours.
Hello. So, just some updates. Guidance yesterday hosted a FAFSA and Scholarship Night for seniors. In the coming weeks, the Drama Club will host auditions for the spring play. Winter sports are in full swing. In fact, girls, basketball had their senior night last week, and other sports will be following shortly. Robotics Club received their task for the competition and has been diligently working to make it happen. And I know it's been a few months since we met, but Holiday Spirit Week was a success with very fun themes like Swinter and Winter Wonderland. And lastly, mid-terms have just wrapped up and they were pretty successful, I would say. And I'd also like to apologize for my tardiness. I did believe he was at seven. I'm so sorry.
Questions? Seeing none? Thank you very much. We'll move on to superintendent's report. Superintendent Connor?
Thank you. So, a lot of what, oh, sorry. A lot of what we heard from Fozzie are some of the things that we're working on through the acceleration roadmap that I presented on and Dr. Guile presented on this, earlier this fall. And so, that roadmap has really been something that we've been trying to focus in on because it is a great document. So, if you remember, Phase One was the sense of belonging. And we did a lot of work with that, trying to get kids back into the swing of things and remembering how school works. We did a survey to students and to faculty and staff, so we have that information now. We're going to dissect it and put that into play at building level. So, we're looking forward to that. The interesting thing about the acceleration roadmap is the phases had months attached to it. So, Phase One was summer to end of September. But the sense, the phase of self-belonging never goes away, in my opinion. It's something that we need to do every day, whether there's a pandemic or whether there's not a pandemic. And that builds in student engagement. The next thing that we were working on, as you can tell, the academics are starting to move in the right direction, but is the family engagement. Because without the family engagement, there is a ceiling. And so, part of what we'll be working on through the remainder of this year, but also as something, and it'll go into the, my next topic down the agenda, but it's getting parents more and more involved. As you can see with the videos and the pictures Fozzie put together, how important it is to engage caregivers and family members. And so, that's going to be a big push as we move forward to continue that. We'll have a brand-new school next year, so we're going to be showing that off and hopefully using that as an opportunity to get parents in at the Coburn. And, you know, as we start to talk about the Memorial Project as well. So, looking forward to it. The acceleration roadmap continues to move on. It has us grounded in the equity work to being sure that the work that we're doing is hitting all marks. So, I'm very pleased to share with you that the social, emotional side is something that we continue to work on, but the academic side, as you can tell, is kicking in. So, we're proud of that.
Questions for superintendent? Seeing none? Or the assistant superintendent?
Hello, everyone. Just a real quick update on the visioning project that is happening in Memorial right now. The first and the eighth, we had two sessions, two and a half hours in length. We had parents, teachers, community members, administrators at the site and the district level, working with New Vista Design and David Stephen, I think was his name, and TBA Architects, who facilitated the visioning. The work that we did was focused on not so much a grand imagining of what could be, but a really practiced and thoughtful session that took people through the priority goals, future-ready teaching and learning practices, overview of key programs, and future-ready learning goals. And that was on day one. And on day two, it was a focus on 21st century design patterns, no to low cost, which I know might resonate with some, approaches to school facility renovation and reimagination, blue-sky ideas, and then guiding principles for the project. You know, Ms. Marcus was on the board, on the committee that worked on this project. It was well-designed. It was well-facilitated, and it was very interactive, which is one of the things that I think is important in a project of this nature, is to give everybody an opportunity to collaborate and share and envision what is most important in the minds of the school community. And that's really what David Stephen did in the work that was done. TBA and their work thus far have been very responsive to the feedback and the input. We've had engineers onsite. We've had the visioning sessions. And the turnaround between all the data dump and the reply to us has been pretty prompt, which is important in a project of this nature as we envision it.
Questions? Mr. Garvey?
Yeah, I'm kind of just a little confused where we are timetable on this. Is this, and I guess the reason I'm confused is attending the PCC meeting. It just seems like there's some decisions that are being made or might be being made. I just have no idea where we are in the process and where we are on the timeline.
Yeah, there was a, at the PCC, there was a misunderstanding around the need for a decision that night, which there wasn't one. It was really just a presentation of the process to date. And unfortunately, we didn't make sure that all the stakeholders were on the same page with respect to that. So, I think we disabused everybody of that notion that we need to make a decision right now because the work of envisioning wasn't done yet. The timeline is tight. Mr. Matoon from the city has done a fantastic job of articulating the timeline for the project and making sure that we have, A, the architects on board, which we do now, B, that we have the envisioning and the collaboration and the input of stakeholders, which we do now have, and then that we move to the next stages of the project in a timely manner.
Anyone else? Seeing none? Thank you. We want the business manager's report. Ms. Hunter?
Thank you. Due to the enrollment increase at, with students of limited or interrupted formal education, known as SLIF students, the English Learner Department is requesting to use supplemental funding that's been provided by the Federal Refugee School Impact Grant to hire staff to assist with transitioning these students into an educational setting. The SLIF staffing they're looking to add are an interim teacher and a paraprofessional.
Do we have a motion? Ms. Farrell?
Motion to approve one ESL interim teacher to provide instructional services for new SLIF students. Position will be funded by the ORI grant through SY 2122.
Second.
So, motion and a second. How the budget subcommittee vote?
The budget subcommittee voted unanimous affirmative in favor of this. And Ms. Distef gave us some background of the students that were, had moved into West Springfield and the need for this position. And she also explained that the ORI grant had increased this year with the available funds running through September 30th of 2022. So, these funds were meant to service the students that we are now getting in the community.
Okay. Any further discussion? Ms. Marcus?
Just a clarification. This, these positions are at the high school level. Yes, that's my understanding. Yes.
And the physical location is still the annex?
No, they're going to be working out of the high school.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none? By a show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Old business, district policy.
We still have to do the paraprofessional.
I took them both at the same time. All right.
Motion to approve one interim English-language paraprofessional to provide instructional support for new SLIF students. This position will be funded by the ORI grant through SY 2122. Same information. Budget subcommittee was unanimous affirmative.
Second.
So, motion and a second. Budget subcommittee was all in favor. Any further discussion?
Mayor, this is, this position goes with the SLIF position just as an FYI.
That's why I thought they did them at the same time. By a show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. All right, on the old business, district policy update. Superintendent, would you give us an overview?
Sure. And before I do that, I just want to also, we thanked everybody, but I want to thank the school committee, the mayor, for allocating the amount of interventionist and supports both on the SEL side but also on the academic side. A lot of what we're seeing in these gains, and, you know, we can show data pretty easily with the academics, but it's, you know, it's not as easy sometimes with the SEL side. But thank you because the work that you've did, the allocation of those positions, has shown to really, really support kids to get to where they need to be. So, we forgot to thank all you. So, thank you. The policy regarding attendance. So, next year, one of the initiatives that will come out of my office is a real focus on student attendance. As we, as we've come off of the pandemic, and I can't wait to not say that anymore, but as we come off the pandemic, one of the challenges that we are facing is student resiliency. People are exhausted. Parents are exhausted. Kids are exhausted. And so, we're going to, we're going to take another run and tighten up our attendance policy. And this, a lot of this work goes to both Aaron Rogers, our data specialist, who did a lot of work in digging up some of the inconsistencies that we found across our policies, as well as Fred Burton, who is our attendance officer. And so, they came, they did a lot of work, couple months' worth, to share with me, Dr. Perron, Dr. Guile, a proposal around where we should be moving with attendance. I can't agree more. The goal is not to penalize. The goal is to build that collaboration. So, earlier in the conversation, I talked about the idea of needing that family engagement. Family engagement starts with that, building that relationship between home and school so that we build that trust and we build that safe spot so kids do get to school, that we reduce the amount of absences. And so, this policy here, it combined policy JE and JH, but it has tightened it up in terms of the notification to parents when students are absent unexcused. So, we will be having more communication with those parents. We'll be having meetings with those parents. And believe me, it's not, not that we want to have continued meetings. We want your, we want your kids every day at school, as long as they're healthy, every day at school. And so, as we, as we go forward with this and launch, it won't start until September. We're not going to change the game in the middle. So, we'll start it, but there'll be a big push from, from all of us around attendance and what that means and why, why we need the kids there as much as possible. So, we're looking forward to it. I thank the policy committee for reviewing and approving, so.
With that, do I have a motion? We'll take them both. All right, one's updated, one's deleted. So, we'll start with student absences and excuses. Ms. Coy?
Motion to approve student absences.
Motion to approve student absences and excuses filed JH as revised.
Second.
A motion and a second. How the subcommittee vote?
The policy subcommittee voted unanimous and affirmative.
Any further questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none? By a show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Student attendance?
Motion to approve the deletion of student attendance filed JE.
Second.
Motion and a second. How the subcommittee vote?
Policy subcommittee voted unanimous and affirmative.
All right, we have a motion and a second. By a show, any further discussion? Sorry, getting ahead of myself. By a show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Public comment? No one in the crowd. All right. Move on. Next school committee meeting will not be until March 8th. It will start at 6:00, but there's a budget, budget public hearing, always my favorite time of year, at 5:30. So, the budget public hearing will be at 5:30, and the meeting, regular school committee meeting, will follow, televised in this auditorium. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Without objection. Do I have a second?
Second.
Without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.